...legislative session and the kind of funding opportunities we may have for projects. And so, thank you very much for joining us, I appreciate it. And it was more guidance as much as anything on what can you tell us about the best way to go about getting projects funded and what type of projects will receive the best result?
Well, first of all, thank y'all for inviting me, I really do appreciate it. Frankly, we need to be doing this sort of thing right before every session if not, for that matter, getting the county and us together and for that matter, the university. One of the things that I think would help us in trying to decide whatever project we're looking at it, and this is my opinion, so when I say this, please don't think that I'm speaking for the legislature, I'm speaking for Rob. So, before I move down that road too far, I feel like Starkville and Octavol County have been ignored as far as projects has been concerned for years. We kind of, my daddy used to like to say that the poor redheaded stepchild gets ignored. Well, it feels like we've become that at times because we don't ask. And we haven't done a real good job, and that's not on any particular administration, this has been going on for 100 years. We haven't made some large ask. You look at the coast right now, the coast makes large ask. If you look at the northernous part of our state, they ask, they make some large ask. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna get 'em, but it means that we're in the process of getting some kind of potential thing. So, my theory on some of this is, and it may take us longer than a year, it may take us five years to do this, but we need to start making some large ask. And it needs to be in the background of having the city, the county, for that matter, the hospital, people over here, the university, all of us making this ask in the same way. In other words, what has happened, when I was on the board anyway, years and years ago, we would make an ask, the university would make an ask, the county would make an ask, and usually there wouldn't be those large of an ask, but anybody would get left out, somebody would get left out of the thought process of what we're doing, and we'd end up working against each other. When we have, we're in kind of a unique situation because we do have a university and it is the engine that drives just about everything in our community. And whenever the university makes an ask, y'all, keep in mind, a $40 million project for MSU is called revitalization. $40 million for us, for the city of Starkville, that's a big ask. And we're gonna have to start kind of fighting that process, and that doesn't mean get on the opposite side of the university, that's not what I'm saying. But get in a process that we're putting this in the line of, well, you may not get all of it this year, or you may not get any of it this year, but you'll be in line for it next year. I think that's the smart, the smart move. I know that there's been some talk about maybe a road project or something like that, those are the kinds of things that work. Especially if you can line it up with your healthcare, especially if you can line it up with your school district or your university. Blackjack, we were able to get money for blackjack for the county last year, frankly, because the university wanted that road fixed as much as the county did. So, there was some, and of course, that was a huge sum of money, but it was huge compared to what we normally have gotten. So, I want us to take the initiative, pick a project, whatever project that is, and commit to it. And when I say commit to it, everybody at this table, including the ones that aren't here, we all have to commit to what that project is. If we have one of our board members that is against it, I hate to say it, but it's the fly in the ointment that keeps us from being able to move through the process and secure those funds. The kind of money I think we need to be asking for, we need to make the ask for 50, 60 million dollars, depending on what the project is, I think we make that ask. Are we gonna get it? Probably not. But you make the ask so that you have the ability to negotiate. Now, I don't know what the, I'm assuming the project is twice that, or I'm assuming the project is about that much. So, it really kind of depends on the project. What are some ideas that y'all have been discussing as a board that you think would be something that would work for us? Because what I'd like to do is see if we could just kind of come together and be congruent in what we're doing and asking for, get our other representatives in line. We do have a new senator that we need to bring on board with what we're talking about. But, and I realize this is the first steps of what we're trying to do, but what are some of the things, and we've talked about a little bit, but I don't want to make the assumption that that's what you want to do.
Well, I'll be perfectly transparent. I had thought that, I had long thought that extension of Hospital Road and the extension of Stark Road would be an appropriate area for opening up that part of the community to development. And Alderman Sistrum yanked my chain and said, "Time out, you're not thinking broadly enough." And so, I put down this whole list of stuff, like a new library, like moving the jail out of downtown, which is a collaborative effort, obviously. A parking garage behind Starkville Cafe that would allow us to transform our main street in some kind of way. So, and other concerns, I know Alderman Vaughn had expressed a concern about traffic on 182 as it relates to the school, but I'm hopeful that the build grant will address that. So, and there are other things, and that was part of the work session that I wanted our board to think about when we had it last time. So, if anybody's come up with other projects that they are interested in adding to the mix, I know Alderman Little has concerns, as do others, about expanding, you know, widening South Montgomery going down to the south. So, I'm happy to anybody go around, Alderman Sistrum.
And I, when I did suggest that perhaps the mayor could broaden her thinking process, she...
Yeah, she was a little more direct than that.
She came up with a list, and there were a lot of good things on it, that we do not lack for good projects, we do not lack for good projects. And when I've been thinking about it, I've been trying to think of something where there's a fairly immediate need, something that benefits much of the community, there's always gonna be somebody who feels like this doesn't benefit them, but something that benefits much of the community, something that the city is not likely to be able to do on their own, certainly not in the short term. And so, I'm gonna echo some of the things that she has said, the parking garage downtown, and if we are thinking 50, 60 million dollars while we're at it, a parking garage and reworking the university, the midtown section of University Drive revitalizes that area, makes it more attractive to, and more unique, so that the downtown doesn't die. I'm a huge proponent of the library, the new library, it touches on schools, there's community health element of it, it allows us to address the problems that a 60-year-old library, which is what we have, doesn't currently address. When that building was built, it was built with the idea that you went to the library to check out a book, and that's just not the case anymore, it needs to be more text-centric, it needs to have spaces for programmings for different age groups, it needs to have meeting rooms, it needs to have some additional parking. So, that's one that, if you've been to the library, you'll see is widely used by all segments of our community. I'm not ready to give up, I'm not ready to give up on the idea of railster trails for that section of the railroad that exists in the city of Starkville. I don't think that there's the broader support to make it a longer thing, but within the city of Starkville, it gives us a biking pedestrian path that goes from Cornerstone to Research Park and allows us, in the meantime, to also fix that rocky intersection at Lincoln and Montgomery, which I think is on everybody's list of bad intersections in the city of Starkville. So, those are all things that I think I could support. Somebody may throw something out that I go, "I hadn't even thought about that, that's a brilliant idea." But I do think parking garage, reworking University Drive, the new library, the railster trails project, there's merit to everything that's been mentioned, it's a question of timeliness and benefit now as opposed to maybe benefit 20 years from now.
Well, and let me ask a question, how much, to go forward with an ask, assuming we land on something, how much detail does we, do we have to present in order to make it a viable or a legitimate request that would be considered seriously? I mean, can I just say, I want $50 million for a new library?
We need to have a, no, we're gonna have to have a general idea of real costs and how much are we putting in, how much are we willing to match? There's gonna be a matching thought process that goes on with this. The reason I say we ask the big number is we have a lot more likelihood of getting something reasonable. I'm a firm believer in shoot for the stars, and if you hit the moon, we've done better than what we've been doing. So, I do believe that there is the potential to do whatever project that we want to do, but we're gonna have to have a little bit of understanding of, you know, what is this actually gonna cost, what part of this are we going to put in? Another thought process in all this, and I know that y'all, this is your first rodeo with a lot of this, but there may be some matching funds that, between the city, the state, and the feds, especially if we can find areas that are close to some low-income areas. You and I were thinking the same thing on that, I could tell your mind was going that direction as well.
Well, and that's one of the things that perhaps makes the library project more attractive because we, for everything that we know and love about our community, we are in a lot of ways a high poverty area. And the library is that resource for a lot of people who need access to computers, access to books, a place to get to the internet because they don't have internet in their community out of the county. It's open to everybody, everybody. So, I agree that there may be, there may be opportunities.
And before I say this, understand, I'm not against the idea of the library, but I will tell you this from a broad stance, libraries just aren't as sexy as they used to be, and that's probably not the best of terms.
That's because we haven't seen one done well. We have a bunch of 50, 60-year-old libraries, I can show you some pretty sexy libraries.
Some exciting, right. And it helps to get a project that people can get excited about so that you kind of get this movement. One of the things that, well, the baseball field, that has that sexier feel to it that you get people kind of excited about. Now, that being said, I'm not trying to downplay that, what I'm trying to do is say, as we're moving through this and trying to figure out how we want to tackle this, we need to try to have at play all of these pieces. The ask is gonna come down to our legislative body that goes down there and how hard we're able to work and how hard we're able to maneuver into some things. Keep in mind, y'all, that, and the reason I say that we need to think large, I look at Mississippi and I think that we're just as viable as any other part of our state. There are parts of our state that have had some pretty major projects put in, and there's been an ask for the last five to seven years of 10 and 15 million dollars for this one project. And I'm not talking about a road, I'm talking about a building. So, I want us to at least know that that is a viable thing that we need to be at least trying to attract or look at and move forward with. Now, does that mean that we're gonna be, that we're gonna get it? No, but what it does mean is I want us to be looking in terms, in exactly the way that y'all are kind of thinking about this, in broader terms, and I just really do believe that if we dream big, we can make big things happen, just as a matter of not limiting ourselves in how we approach this. And it may not be one project, we may want to do more than one project.
Well, and if I can come back, one of the things that, you know, we all work through these things in our mind, and we assume that everybody knows what we know, one of the things I've thought is, if we built a new library, the ideal place to put it would be down on Highway 182. As the build grant is finishing up, it becomes an anchor building there in that area, and maybe helps to jumpstart development in that area. Another project that I've thought about is that this might be an opportunity to rethink where our fire stations are. And some of our fire stations are pretty old and in need of some additional love and attention, but that's, especially as annexation goes forward, it might be nice to have something like that. Like I said, there's no end to good projects, lots and lots of good projects out there, so.
Allman Little, any thoughts on projects, aside from the one I've mentioned, associated with widening South Montgomery going south, other thoughts?
Sanders hit on several, we've kind of bounced around and over the last several days talking. I really like the railster trails, but we're kind of at the mercy of railers.
Exactly. When you have a third party...
Before we go to legislature, obviously we need some sort of agreement going in, or it's just a moot point. But I'd like to see something that touches a lot of people, you know, parking, we always hear about the parking downtown, a parking garage, the viability of that, it's something really big. You mentioned the jail, that's been something that's mentioned over the years, getting that outside the downtown area and opening up, opening up some space and property, real estate downtown for something other than a jail.
And that, let's take that one just for a second, because that would be a collaborative effort with the county.
Right.
And I think the county probably would be in agreement, it'd be a matter of how we go about doing that, and that again is, that's a large, that would be a large.
That would definitely be a large ask, and I know that, again, I don't want to speak for them, but I do know that that has been something that's been discussed in terms of not having enough space that we, and frankly, look, there's been conversations about not having enough space in the jail that we have for adults, and there's this juvenile...
Juvenile problem. That's a juvenile issue. And that is a, that is potential opportunity there that might get some traction in the legislature, particularly if it's a joint effort with the county and the city, and maybe even something that would be more regional, or at least have a buy-in from West Point and Lounds as they all have a shortage of space for the juvenile population that needs to be taken into account.
But don't we have a capacity issue as well, don't we send folks over to West Point?
Well, we used to send folks to West Point, I don't know, we're not sending them to West Point now, are we having capacity at the Octavol County Jail?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. But, because we've got beds that are reserved there, that we have shared with them on that, but I assume we're not using them all on a daily basis?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, that's a, that kind of project, but clearly, you know, that's also a long-term kind of planning project that we would need to, we would need to have some serious development on in order to make that a viable thing to take to the legislature, because we need to go with the county and obviously with the sheriff, and if we could find support in Clay and Lounds to share that in some kind of way, from a juvenile standpoint as well as from an adult detention area.
Well, here's a thought process, and as we're kind of battering this around in our heads, if you took a road project and then plugged in these two elements into the project as part of the scheme, whether it be on the east side or the west side, wherever we're talking about, I mean, it may be that we could take these projects as a whole and it'd be a 15, 20-year program, that what we're doing is plugging in the road, then plugging in the project or whatever it is that we're talking about, whether that be with the county, plugging in, the county and the city coming together and building a youth detention or jail facility, or a library, or whatever it is.
Fire station.
Right, fire stations, exactly. So, it may be that we could take this idea and kind of formulate this, because there's been discussion about trying to revitalize 182 for at least the last 30 years. So, this thought process of us trying to come together with the project, put all these things together, and it's not to suggest that we would be able to make it happen in four years, but it would at least lay us out a plan.
A capital plan.
Right. I mean, it's, and Tupelo did a similar, you remember downtown, whenever they built the park with the new city hall, that whole setup was, heck, it was 20 years in the making.
Like a master plan of sorts, in that area?
So, I mean, if we're gonna dream, dream big and see if we can pull it together.
Public buildings, public roads.
Right.
Tupelo got a portion of sales tax to apply to that national.
Right, right.
They don't see the state of Jackson, Tupelo had, general sales tax above 70%, lower, lower 70%.
I think you're right, I'm trying to remember.
That's correct, because Jackson has one standard and Tupelo has a fourth standard. They have to, every year they have to up that rest rate, what they do is they find out the product, like those things that, parks and the city hall area and all that, and they're using that as a probably match to what you're...
Right.
Well, while we're dreaming big, which we spoke the other day about the expense associated with it, right-ofways acquisitions of South Montgomery, we see folks trying to walk, jog, runners, there's no shoulder, we would have to, you know, make another lamp, have to cover ditches, cover the gutter and so forth, but a walk, jogging path, something out to the city limits that would come in and connect to the other, you know, toward the university. We don't have a park in Ward 3, what to speak of, and just that accessibility for the biker, we know a lot of people that bike and jog and like to walk and would open up South Montgomery, it's just not safe at all to get out, and you see the people jumping over on the shoulder, somebody's gonna get hit, and I hope it doesn't get to that point to where that happens, but it is a safety issue that we need to look into. And that's something that probably is a long-term plan, but as you said, we need to get something in place, dream big, and if we get pieces of the pie, at some point, we may hit a home run, so.
Well, and hopefully our master transportation plan that's in the process right now will address, provide a project, a go-forward type of role for South Montgomery, because it is on, it is on part of the discussion. Edward, South Montgomery, as we're looking at that master transportation plan, is, that's part of a future look, is it not?
It is, yeah, they're looking at capacities of these major corridors to see where those improvements need to make, and I know that we're nearing capacity of South Montgomery, we just recently did a traffic impact study for the Adelaide next phase, which looked at the entire development, and that was one of the findings from the traffic impact study, but we will be nearing that capacity soon. And what that looks like is not that your level of service is just gonna put down, people are gonna just have to build it longer than you think, or it'll be more delays.
And that's supposed to come out in April, I think, of next year, the master transportation plan?
Does that include in that a space for parks or, I guess, some buffer zones?
The transportation plan talks about greenways as opposed to parks, I think, is that not accurate?
We have a separate plan for the bike head master plan that is kind of related to this, and it's focusing on connecting parks and providing more trails, greenways, that type of thing. So, between both of those plans, I think we'll have a list of prioritized transportation-related projects that you could pick and choose from.
Is there a way to, for us to be looking at either, for that planning purposes to purchase those zones, because you know as well as I do, as they develop, this is skyrocket in pricing and all of that, is that part of that thinking?
I think right now, they're just looking at obvious things that would be helpful or beneficial or in the city's best long-term interest to have, it's not going to really get into procurement of that land, but you know, you could tackle that, either through procurement or some type of a policy, or a combination of them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Allman Beatty.
Mayor, Representative Blackhead.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Assistant Chief Stewart, House Chief.
Good to have you, sir.
Couple things, and I'll echo what some of the uncles said, I'd like to see us look at the construction of a new central fire station, most of our flagship fire station. If we're successful in our annexation in November, and, you know, a year from now, we move to city limits or less, we're gonna complement it, same stuff, we're covering Mississippi State now, we're gonna cover a new area, a new central fire station that's still in central part of the city, maybe somewhere at the end of the intersection of Russell and 12, I know that's some high dollar, you know, highest investment used commercial type property, but somewhere maybe in that area where you put in a fire station that meets the needs and the fact that a lot of our calls now go out to MSU anyway, and when we take in, if we're successful, we're gonna have another, I mean, 100 homes and businesses out there, several hundred that will be covered. And so, responsible there, of course, Mississippi State Raiding Road have to weigh in on location of it often, of course, but that would be a very expensive project, I mean, a big station would be a few million dollars, five million dollars project, so that's a significant in size of capital expenditures. The second thing would be, and Allman Little and I, I'll say it so he doesn't, a new entrance into MSU and South Florida, we still, South Star, the mayor, listening to, is bottled up, and it's just a, it's getting ingress, egress from South Star, you know, issue, and it's not getting better, it's getting worse, because a lot, a lot of new developments are happening in South Montgomery. And the new, the new road through the, through the, the South Farm helped, but a lot of people live north, far north, they don't go down, go around that way. Allman, you might weigh in on...
Yeah, right now, I think we're kind of hamstrung with the university not wanting to bifurcate the South Farm, so until they're willing, I don't know that that's something worthy to chase after, but I agree, it's definitely a need, and the mayor and I've discussed it.
We're gonna show that on that master transportation plan, we're gonna foreclose it as a part of the dialogue, it's just not going to happen right now, so.
Drainage, channelization, we're, and those are big expensive projects, and representative problems, they're not sexy, but when people, water back in people's neighborhood, yards, and some instances, get in the house, stuff like that, it becomes sexy then. So, north and south Star have water issues, we've had in the last, since I've been on board, but I don't know before, then, we've had, Allman Vaughn, let him weigh in on this, we've had rain, we've had two 100-year, Mr. Kim, couple of 100-year watt of rain events, right, in a single year?
Very, very large.
And houses flooded on, what's the, not Edgewood, the Briarwood, some place, no, something, housing there 40, 50 years, never flooded, flooded water in the back of the houses and stuff, so we've got drainage problems. water in the, in the, in the back of the houses and stuff. So, we've got drainage problems and, and, uh, I know those are core engineer things. And if it comes to CDVG, it's gotta meet the low mod and the, the, our, our economic development stuff. But, but, um, if we applied through the PED for a large core engineer grant and, and we knew the cost, you know, we'd get some cost investment, stuff like that, I mean, would the state money be the match money if we had to do a twenty, twenty, or twenty-five percent local match? I mean, and that turns into being a two or three or four million dollars local match toward a ten, twelve, you know, million-dollar project or something? Is that possible?
I think anything's possible. I think that one of the things that, well, drainage is a major problem, and it's not just here, it's everywhere. The, the county's dealing, I mean, as y'all know, the county's dealing with some of the same issues. The, I think that, that, that what might not be a, a bad idea is to, the, the city and the county get together. And for that matter, the, the water doesn't just stop when it reaches the edges of our limits, whether it be city limits, county or, or state for that matter. But we're, we're gonna have to do a better job. For that matter, I've, I've had somebody come in the office the other day, and Temple Cove had flooding coming into his, his area. So, it's, it's, you're right, it's everywhere. With every new development project, you end up with more water coming off of the, whether they cut a bunch of trees or whatever the deal is, it, it ends up flooding that area. And you're right, it, I, I don't remember this happening until, till now. I mean, a lot of this stuff has never happened before. So, if we don't get a handle on, and it may already be too late. We may be fighting the proverbial water back while we're trying to get the, a, a solution to this. But there's, to me, there's a possibility that, that, that this could plug in. We should be able to, to, to do something. But I do think that it needs to be in cooperation at minimum with the county and get the university involved into it. Because I know dogged well, they're, they're gonna end up having some of the same issues that we're, we're having. And it's their people that are, uh, you know, their people live in our community. So, I, I would think that they would, would, would be interested in helping us kind of get some of that together as well. So, I, I think the drainage issue is probably, if I had two issues that I think are top priorities for, for all of us, drainage and dealing with a, a youth and potentially adult prison-type jail are two of the big, the big wants that, that we have as far as they're common with the, with the county. So.
Let me miss one thing, I'll get out of it. The mayor knows that, I can go on my stuff. And I, I'll, I'll echo again with Alvin Sistrone, I think Alvin Little's assistant on this also. But the rails, the trails thing, have, have we, has anybody, mayor, has anybody approached KCS about it?
Okay, well, let me bring everybody up to date. KCS has leased that line from West Point to Ackerman to Watco.
Watco.
I have, I have spoken with, uh, I, I've tried to speak for decades and, or almost decades, ever since I got on, involved in the city in two thousand and five. I had a tickler in my file to call KCS. They never responded. When I found out that Watco was now leasing or in charge of those lines, I put in an email to the, I picked a, I picked somebody in the, in the staff on their, on their website. And, and he, he emailed me the next day, put me in touch with someone who then emailed me, and we had a Zoom call the following day. So, they have been very responsive. But the problem is, they've only got a fifteen-year lease with KCS. And that lease does not allow them, afford them an opportunity to do much of anything with that line. I, they're right now assessing the line to try to determine if it's got, what it would take to bring it up to usability. And, um, one of the things that they have said is that because that lease is a fifteen-year lease, they don't feel comfortable that they have adequate time to allow us to do something and them to not be constrained by their agreement with KCS. So, the fact that we're having to deal with a third party and, or a fourth party, we don't even want to look at it, creates some dilemma for us and for them. I think that they wouldn't mind, but they, she's, the lady I spoke with sent me a map of the rail lines in the state of Mississippi. And one of the things I found very interesting is that this, this particular piece of line is one of the only straight lines that go to the north and east. And so, I can sort of intellectually understand why it is they want to reserve it. But, you know, there is an opportunity, I think, at some point for rail banking to take that. But they're really most interested in Newton, in going from Ackerman to Newton. And so, they had to take this piece of line if they wanted that piece of line.
Their line, they have, their short line now goes from Newton to Bay Springs, and they want to complete that to Ackerman.
Yeah.
But they don't have any customers on the north side of Star. They know there's no incentive. They want to pick up customers. They don't really want to go lease that, that line. And there's some customers potentially for them in the industrial, our south, our west industrial park, the old, our main industrial park. There's, I don't know. And the line goes into that industrial park. I don't know.
Yeah, it traverses along the northern end of it, but there's nothing there.
But I'm, but I'm, there's not, there's any building, but there's potential. And that, they wouldn't lease it. They have thought.
There's not any potential now that we own it. We've got, we've got it all wrapped up for cornerstone. Other than that, it's the Department of Highway, the, the Mississippi Highway Patrol and.
No, no, no. I'm talking about the old industrial park. That, that, we have industry.
You're talking about the research park?
No, I'm talking about.
Our research.
Oh, Flex, Flex Steel, in that area?
That's what I call our industrial park.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
But they leased it, they leased it because they think they, they potentially pick up some customers along that way, you know, in, in Starville. They would, they would lease it. On the north side of town from, from Starville to West Point, I don't know if there's any potential, you know. And there again, too, I don't, railroads don't like, when you've got tens, ten railroad crossings in a place like Starville, I don't have any, we have seven, eight, something like that. They don't like that either. And so, I can see the abandonment of, or, or them leasing to and maybe us putting a, a group together where KCS maybe goes past fifteen years or however many years they got left on that, uh, on that, the line from Starville to West Point. Because I just don't see that being something going forward, or at least immediately in the near future, uh, by as far as a.
They were pretty candid that they really didn't want this section. What they wanted was the Newton, the Ackerman and Newton section, but they had to take it in order to get this. So.
So, I mean, I think that, that's something. But that's, you know, you get, now you get Clay County, Octava County, you see Starville, see West Point, you know, the thing. It happened up here on this, on this tang foot thing. I mean, I, I write that thing on top. But that's, that's great. If we had that thing with the, the trail, the trailhead was at, at the, right there at the fire station downtown, and it goes fourteen, fifteen miles, sixteen miles up to West Point into their, their cities, their central park, I mean, that, down that park thing, that's an awesome thing. And you're talking about close to university and used by, uh, this, the one down in South Mississippi goes right into Southern Miss Camp.
Longleaf Trace, and the, the other county adjacent counties have all connected to it now.
Is that Cogentown and all of them out that way? Yeah. And then they got into it too, you know, and that's, that's.
Last, last year I had a meeting with Chalk Town, Clay, West Point, and, and all the associated entities that would be impacted by this. And they were all in favor. But that was back again before Watco took it over and before KCS was even willing to discuss it with us. Uh, we were just trying to figure out a way to put some pressure on it. And now that Watco's got the lease on it, I'm not at all sure, you know, with a fifteen-year lease, what they're willing to do. But so far, they're saying they, they don't, they don't feel that they have a, the ability to do anything with the shorter lease of that. So, but, you know, I'm, I'm happy to continue to have those dialogues and, and ask them, what about a, what about leaving the rail on it and having a trolley car going back and forth across it? You know, just something to utilize it and make it an asset and not a detriment to the, going right through the middle of the city. But, you know, that, I don't know if that takes us to the discussion we were having, but.
Right.
Yeah, at some point, absolutely, absolutely.
Have we had everybody, at least county, city, or associations, all of it, type?
Yes, uh-huh. We, we all met at the PDD last year. Um, and everyone was, had thumbs up because they can all see the benefit associated, just like Longleaf and, and the, both of the two that are in the state. But at that point in time, it's just a matter of taking some, you know, not taking something, but, but being able to use something belongs to somebody else. And the somebody else is really powerful. They like AT&T, you know, they kind of.
KCS?
They rule the day. Well, the railroads.
Right. They're, they're class one railroads.
Yeah, rule, rule the day, so.
Oh, but, uh, anyway, uh, that's what all I had meant by you.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alvin?
Everybody hits you about the same thing, but just, of course, just we're talking about the rails and trails. Me and my, my grandson in ninth grade, he lived in Memphis. And we go across the railroad track. He said, "Papa said, when was the last time a train came down this track?" I told him, "I know it's been, been a long time since a train came down these rails." And he said, "What, what do y'all want to do with it?" You know, I, I don't know because, uh, the rail companies, they don't keep up keeping them. You know, you can have trees fall on there, just be there until somebody remove them off there and, and go back to it. But, uh, State Representative said, "Thank you so much." Talking about these, uh, drainages and, Alvin Beatty, these drainages, it's, it's a serious issue. Like you say, that, that'll be number one on my list, the drainages. And because, uh, Representative Taylor's working one now on, on West Side Drive on the twine. And he came back to me the other day, say that it's gonna be a little longer than he really thought it was gonna be to be successful. So, you know, it, it, it's, it's a lot. And, and it's a lot that we're dealing with. So, everything that Alvin and Sistrone said, you know, I agree. We, we got to do something. But, you know, like you say, we got to think big instead of thinking small.
So, in going to the legislature, what kind of package would, I mean, because this is what we're talking about here. If we're talking about doing a large project, that's, we're talking about serious coordination and, and putting something together that is a, a package of some kind to create a vision. So, how much, and that goes back to my, how much detail, how much information, just aside from, from what cost and a match, what kind of, what kind of pretty pictures would we need to put together to make this?
It would, it would, to me, it would be similar to how we were selling, when we, when we were putting the baseball field together. We would have to have something, it didn't have to be a hundred percent accurate in what we're trying to, to do, but something that kind of shows what it is that we're trying to, to accomplish. And honestly, it really kind of depends on what direction we're going in. If we're gonna build a library, we need to have some idea of what, you know, square footage, what is it gonna have, what are, who is it gonna, uh, who, who are we going to try to, 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 to benefit from this?
And that's also a county thing too, because it's the Octava County library.
And, and part of a state system too. So, it, it.
The, uh, the, i- if it's a road, um, obviously a, a, maybe a, uh, you know, where are you connected? What are, what are you trying to accomplish here?
That's, you know, that's fairly easy.
Those are, to, to, to me, the vision for certain things are fairly easy to, to look at. A road, you're trying to match this road to this road, you obviously have the area in there and kind of have a game plan as to, to how you're gonna get there. I believe that part of the match that we could say that we're doing, because they, because the state doesn't go in there and look at detail. But if we went to any property owner, and for argument's sake, if I owned a thousand acres over there and y'all wanted to build a road, I'd be your biggest cheerleader. I'd come up and say, "Hey, you know, I, I will donate this, this property." Well, the question for me is at that point, what is it worth? The value of that property is part of your match as far as I'm concerned. We put that in there as part of the, uh, what, what we were talking about. If it's property for a new library, it would be if somebody were gonna give you that land for a library, that's part of your match. They don't, they don't care where the money comes from that we're matching it. They just want to know that there's, there's skin in the game. Some of this is gonna, and, and one of the things that, that, I'll go back twenty-five years whenever I was on here. We had made an ask at the federal level for a, and if you, some of y'all may remember this, but it was taking University Drive and put a sidewalk, a larger sidewalk through there. Well, whenever the money was allocated, Chip Pickering worked very hard to get this money. We couldn't agree on this, on our board, how that, that sidewalk was gonna, to, to be taken care of. And the sidewalk ended up getting used on a university property instead of ours. So, these are the kinds of things that happened. Do you remember this?
I, I don't remember it.
This, this has been twenty-five, thirty years ago. And when you have, when we have something like that happen, it's awfully hard to make the ask the next time. Chip Pickering, well, he's no longer our congressman anymore, but, uh, it's gonna be a hard sell. I got X amount for you and you didn't use it. The university ended up using it.
Exactly.
So, that, it, it, at some point, one of, and I guess what I keep harping on, whatever it is that we do, we, we need to be.
Ready to go.
Ready to go and, and backing up each other in whatever it is. South Montgomery, bless you is all I can say. That, that has been an issue for, oh gosh, more than thirty years in terms of needing widening and I, if, if somebody comes up with a brilliant solution, I'm praying for you. Because I know y'all are looking at trying to get ideas for, for doing something. I think that's a great idea to try to come up with, to, to do something that could be a, a project. It's needed. There's no doubt in my mind, it's needed. The drainage is, is a, is a, is a great idea. I, I'm, it, it amazes me that some of the same things that, that the county is talking about is the same thing y'all are talking about. So, I think there is some connection and some overlap in how we approach these things. And I would bet, I, I haven't been in the room with, with their planning sessions, but I've been to universities and say, "Boto, some of this." So, there, there was some discussions a few years back about a south bypass connector.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I remember that.
And it's still, and I think it's still some, some talk about it, but I don't know that that's, that may not be something that everybody's just that.
Well, you don't have to forgive me, the idea of bypassing Starville is not my idea of a, of a great thing.
I don't think, I don't think the idea was tenacious. I think it was trying to get people off that university campus a little bit.
Yes, yes. Well, I think Hail State and South, and Poorhouse have been successful in doing that.
And that may be the, 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 the in-round and what we need to do.
And the eastern link is what, toward forty-five.
Yeah.
Long-term. They, they should come out in the road study.
Yeah. Any, Alvin Sistrone?
I, I wanted to throw out just two, two things based on some of the things that we've been talking about. One, let's learn from the past. And if, if we are talking about a fire station, let's, let's go into this with the idea that we are locate, relocating some fire station, not building a new fire station. Because the last new fire station that we built came with no plan for staffing. And it's taken us twelve years to get that station staffed. So, let's, let's.
Might as well.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Well, actually, I had a conversation with Chief Yarborough the other day about that after we had a conversation. And he said, "If we wanted to move one, if we wanted to change one," that he would want number three.
Three, that would be, that's the one I, I would guess.
Well, what I think about is, and we annex, MSRV's, he's gonna tell us, you gotta, we may have to be closer to our new, our new.
And three could, three could do that. It could, it could move, it could move there.
Three is.
But you got three and.
Three is up against North Jackson.
Both on North Garrett. So, so that's one thing. Keep in mind that we're talking relocation, not, not new and not new staff. And then two, I, I think when we talk about a library, people don't recognize how much that costs. Based on some Google searches and some information, it will cost as much as you want it to cost. But it's, it's probably gonna be a twenty-five thousand square foot building. And at four to five hundred dollars a square foot, you're talking about ten to fifteen million dollars or, or more.
And that being taken into account, but overhead that comes with a new.
That's right. That's right.
So, you've got to do operations after that.
And there's property acquisition and blah, 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 blah. But that's not a small project. The idea of asking for a new library is not a small project. But it would give, it would give all of our community an opportunity to rethink what a library is because it's not just books anymore. Technology is a huge piece of what happens at the library now. It also gives us a chance to add some meeting rooms. It's a county-city collaboration.
And actually, we collaborate with MSU because they have a shared.
Yes.
MSU library.
Shared with them as well. And, and it is, it is an old building that's, um, needs to be renovated. And to be, to be dead, dead honest, it is not gonna happen without some outside assistance, I, I don't think. Because we, we will eventually get to a drainage issue. We will eventually get to a road project. But the rehab or renovation or building of a new library is just not gonna happen, to be honest. Not at those kind of dollars.
Well, that gives us all something to, to consider again. And we will, and it looks to, look to me like we may need to have a more focused and concentrated separate session of, of projects and how do we develop the project. So, I'll try to, to put that together. But obviously, we're approaching the legislative session, so I'm not sure that we'll, not sure we'll get there from here. But we'll see if we can push hard and, and get further down the line.
Is it something, take concrete to the legislature?
Well, that's what I was hoping, that was what I was hoping to do.
Well, let me throw this out here. I, I wouldn't mind going ahead and taking something and if, because it, it may not happen this year. I'd like to go ahead and take something. And I hate to say it like this, but if we get it.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. I mean, I hate to be that.
Yeah.
Well, you can, yeah, you can put big brush, brush stroke.
Well, that's the reason not to ask.
Find some Google photos.
Well, how much do we need to bring forward to make a case for a project?
Well, you and I'll talk about that.
Okay, okay.
I'm, I'm gonna make a, I'm, I'm gonna make an ask one way or the other.
Okay.
And you and I'll, kind, you and I'll get together on what your thought process is. And see what we can.
All right. So, we'll, we'll schedule another meeting for the board to sit down and see if we can come up with something. And maybe have several things that we lay out as options. So.
And I'd like to get with Shaq as well and make some.
Well, I had hoped he would. He, he had said he was gonna be here. Something must have come up.
He, he and I texted, I guess it was two, three. He, he and I texted, I guess it was two, three days ago, I thought he was gonna be here, so I apologize.
So we'll, we'll, and we'll also get Bart.
Right, exactly.
Our new senator in, in the mix and we'll have a, we'll have a nice, nice, uh, opportunity to visit with everyone and see if we can't kinda go on the same page with folks. Maybe we'll wrap the county into something as well, so. Thank you so, so much for being here, it's very helpful and, and see what we can do. And we'll, we'll take up our agenda, you are welcome to stay anytime, but we're just gonna go into our agenda for Tuesday night.
Can, can I make?
Of course.
One ask, the, the local and private, we've got two of them, one is that bridge that's in Pleasant.
Acres.
Pleasant Acres, that you and I need to talk about, and then the other one was the one that you sent me. There, I don't have a board order to pay for anything, just to give you a heads up on the thought process, give me a call, let's talk about, cause if, I'm not saying what they will or won't do, I'm just letting you know that right now, I, I, I don't have the authority to, to move forward on the, that particular one.
And Rob, I tell you what, you know.
Y'all wanna take it offline, you're welcome to, to excuse yourself for.
Rob, I was just gonna say the agenda usually takes about ten or fifteen minutes to go through and so if you can hang around, we could just meet right afterwards.
I'll, I'll, I'll step outside and let y'all finish up.
Oh, this is the fun.
The study is public. Well, the study is absolutely public.
Okay, but I'll stay right here.
All right, um, and we will do that, so let's go through this and, you know, we'll, it's not very frustrating how quick we've got anything on there, it's gonna cause some issues. We've got a couple of sets of minutes that Mr. Lattimer has vetted appropriately and everything's good, so consent for that for everyone. Okay, um, and I'm going to mention Halloween, I made myself a note here, so I'm gonna mention Halloween and, and just roughly that we're not doing trunk or treat, et cetera, et cetera, so I'll make those, those comments. Anyone have anything that they wanna add to the?
Are you gonna put out something on social media to suggest it out?
Again, I'll do it.
I may have missed the last one, cause I've, I've got a couple calls and texts.
And I'll do it again, yeah. I, I've been responding to people on Nextdoor and Facebook and, and I will continue, I will do that again. Um, we have no public appearances, we've got this one public hearing, which is our second public hearing with the consideration of the, of the franchise agreement, so that one will have to, to be what it is. And we've made those changes that we had from the last board meeting.
That's right, I'd emailed out to the board members and there's a red line that shows exactly how it changed, primarily that the lines will go underground unless otherwise directed by the city engineer with a concurrence of the mayor.
Okay, all right. Um, then under mayor's business, this is something that Ms. Campanella has asked us to do and we have to do it in order to be eligible to receive federal funding, so this is pro forma, it will not be in your packet, cause it's thirteen hundred and something pages long. So if you wanna have a personal reading of it, you're welcome to do so, but it's not gonna be in the package, just cause it eats up so much data. But I would suggest consent, consent for this one, um, because it is necessary for us to be funded, so.
We can make that available on the website if you need.
Yes, we can do that. And I can't imagine anybody's gonna read thirteen hundred and fifty pages of hazardous mitigation, but, you know, whatever. Um, then we have this, this is related to, Chris, I'm gonna let you take this one.
Sure, and this actually came to me from Alderman Sistrum, from one of her constituents. Uh, so if you think about the airport track, if you're heading north on the Highway twenty-five bypass and you're looking to the right of the airport land, there's a little strip of land about sixty feet across that's owned by the city of Starville, that's part of the airport track, but it's just a sixty foot sliver that separates the Highway twenty-five bypass from the Booth Family LLC property. They've got two tracks right there. Back in the day, in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, there's a lot of discussion about the city building a frontage road along Highway twenty-five, which would allow the Booth family access to those tracks. That road was never built.
Well, it was in conjunction with a potential police station.
That's right, so it was never built.
Yes.
And so, uh, they are landlocked with these two tracks and they've asked us for an easement. And so to give an easement, uh, you have to go through the property disposition statute under Mississippi Code, and that means you gotta get it appraised, uh, with two appraisers and pay the fair market value. And so the first step in the process is just, uh, considering of engaging these two appraisers. And the appraisal fees are split fifty-fifty between us and the Booth family. So we'll get the appraisal back, you guys will get a chance to consider it more, and the next thing that would come before you is the actual easement.
Okay, so, um, consent for that, okay. All right, under board business, we have, uh, acceptance, this is going to be actually three of the, three of the same things, this is all approval of the, of the two percent budget. We normally would do that a little earlier in the year, but we, with COVID, things have changed, so this is, uh, acceptance, uh, V C C will be presented by Robin Fant and with Mike Taggart, I am actual president of the O C E D A, so I would present it. And then, uh, Regina Hyatt, Dr. Hyatt's gonna be there with the Student Association President. Um, I realize that this is frequently consented items, but just in terms of them presenting it, if, y'all, what do we all wanna do? So, wanna put it on, put it on consent?
Hold on.
Consent, all right, let's do consent and I will, uh, I will let them know that it's on consent, but to be there just in case some questions come up, so. Um, planning, we have a final plan approval for forty-three lots at the intersection of Reed and West Side, this is our project, um, or the, the development that is the Clark Grove, that's in Alderman Golems Ward, really gonna be a great project. Chris, have we gotten through the homeowner association issues with them?
We're waiting on final drafts of two documents, the covenants and the escrow agreement, so maybe leave this off consent, we'll get those.
Okay.
Those are conditions of approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and then we have reappointments for three seats that are vacant, so we have one person for each, each position, if that's consent item for, for everybody?
There were no other applicants?
Not, to my knowledge, no. You didn't receive any other applicants, did you, Lisa?
I didn't have, I, I heard Dr. Kim said he didn't already.
Okay, no other applicants, Dr. Kim, okay, all right, so consent for that one. Uh, under engineering, we've got, uh, declaration of surplus and auction, consent for that, all right, thank you. Um, consideration of the low quote for a sidewalk project.
Where's this one at?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Edward, where?
This is the, this is the same, uh, Highway twelve, but we, uh, valves and.
The con, the con.[1637.83]